Well, twice, because they're going to drop off.
Okay. So, um. Did you take a roll call? Never done the community hall before, so I'll take, give it my best shot here. Okay, so, um, the, I need to read this statement prior to us getting started. The floor will be open to the audience for 20 minutes to address the city council on matters that are on the agenda after the city council discusses with staff. We ask that persons wishing to address the city council keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the council as a whole or through the mayor, and profanity may not be used in any form. With that said, the first item on the agenda is item number one, abandoned gasoline service station ordinance discussion. Director Horn?
This will be presented by Assistant Director Charlton.
And I'll be brief. Just to give you a little background, a few months ago, when the courts were about ready to go back into session, our interim community development supervisor, Thaddeus Mack, arranged a meeting with our prosecuting attorney from SRD, Serino, Romello, and Durkin, Peter Passione, just to talk to our inspectors about some of our more challenging code enforcement cases. And one of those cases is an abandoned gas station, which I'm sure everybody is familiar with over on Plum Grove Road. And the challenges that we have, it's pretty similar between all of the cases. If we, if we can identify the owner and call them and get compliance that way, that's the best thing we can do. It's very quick and easy. If we can't identify the owner, or they're unwilling to do what they need to do to comply, those take up a majority of our time. So this is one particular case where we tried to make a lot of preliminary contacts with the owner, and we're unsuccessful in gaining compliance. And Peter, the prosecuting attorney, suggested an ordinance that he had presented in another community who adopted this ordinance and was implementing it quite successfully. Basically, because a gas station is something that has a greater potential for public harm, the underground storage tanks can leak and migrate onto adjoining properties, or otherwise be more of an attractive nuisance problem for adjoining property owners. They felt that we could apply a little bit stricter standard than we're, than we have available to us in some of our other codes. So this language that's presented in the, in the short two-page report is similar to the language that they used in this other community. All we're looking for is a thumbs up or a straw poll vote from you to proceed with this, and then we'll work with the city attorney's office to put this into an ordinance form, into the correct section of our city code. Likely, it would be located in the nuisance section of our code. So that's pretty much it. I'm happy to answer any questions at this point, but again, we're just looking for a thumbs up to continue, or if you have any questions.
Alderman Sanoyka?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So my question is, since this has been adopted in other communities, was the outcome ultimately successful when dealing with more troublesome properties and code compliance?
Ultimately, yes. It still takes some time, because I don't know if you, you know, if you look at the timeframes in there, you still need to start, that ordinance needs to be approved, and there's timeframes. And that's really the thing that frustrates people the most with any code enforcement is how long it takes from the time somebody complains about it until the process works its way through. But it does open up a tool that we don't currently have, that we feel will be more of a poke to the owner to actually do what we need them to do.
And Assistant Director, was there, was there any lessons learned from that community that we would want to apply to our own ordinance?
I did not contact the community. I just took from Peter that they had provided it in another community, but I could find out, you know, I'm sure there's more than one who have implemented this. If you're interested, we could put that together in the next report for you.
I would propose that we do take that into consideration. If it's a significant amount of research, then, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Bessesi. Hopefully, just two quick ones is, I am a thumbs up on this one, and this might be more for Attorney Wolf. Is this effective when we pass it? Can we retro if there's any closed gasoline stations now? Or would this only be enforcement going on ones that close after the passage, say in August? Or can we go back to one that closed 45 days ago and say, you're a nuisance?
If the existing location is determined to be a nuisance, you can implement
Okay.
the provisions of the ordinance.
Okay. And then just the last one, too, and it's probably my interpretation here, Assistant Director Charlton. In item C, when it talks about abatement, I'm guessing that includes removing any underground storage tanks. That's, abatement's inclusive?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any thing to add? Okay. Okay, I believe now it's time for Mr. Steve Hollish.
Do you want a straw vote?
Oh, straw vote first, okay. So then, I guess the straw vote would be, does, does everyone agree with this moving forward as written?
Do you want a roll call?
Do you want a roll call, or?
It looks like it's unanimous.
Yeah, I think so.
So if you can say that it's unanimous for the record, so that our clerk can conclude in the minutes.
It's unanimous, five, five, nothing, with two absents. Next.
Just, just for some clarification, the staff comment and recommendation also requests whether you'd like to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance that would implement the provisions that are detailed in, in the documentation here. So maybe a straw vote on that would be appropriate with respect to direction to prepare an ordinance in that regard.
Okay. So then we're, we're looking for a straw vote for the city attorney to, ours here. Okay, finalize an ordinance with the city attorney for consideration at the future council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, that's unanimous, five yeses, one or two absent, and Alderman Veneziano has now joined our, joined our meeting. So move on to Mr. Hollish.
Alderman, Mayor Protem, we have a comment from.
Director Horn?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Alderman Bessesi. I just wanted to make it clear for the whole council that we will address Alderman Sanoyka's issue in the next write-up for the ordinance and potential text amendment related to lessons learned by other communities. So that would be part of our actions moving forward. I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay, yes, I should not have assumed. I was assuming that, sorry, Alderman Sanoyka. So now it's time for Mr. Hollish, I believe.
Good evening. I think you need my name for this. Steve Hollish, 4811 Deepwood in Palatine, through the Rolling Meadows. What I wanted to talk about is the position of the assistant city manager you have on review for tonight. I think that, what?
No, go ahead.
What?
It's fine.
Go ahead.
I swear.
Go ahead.
What do you want me to do? Okay, we'll go back to me again. Regarding assistant city manager, I think it, the write-up is really good. The only thing I find in there is that maybe you should just apply that to a city manager now, because it looks like you're going to need a new city manager, and I don't think there's any criteria in anywhere that says what a city manager should do. The only thing I would say is that if you're doing it for a city manager, that salary range is probably still okay. We have to try and keep our budgets a little bit more under control, and you don't want to go out there and start spending a lot of money for a manager for, maybe we don't need him, maybe we should start saying, let's look at this a little bit more. I think the criteria is really good that you've got there. You're really reaching for something that's probably a hard reach, because you're looking for somebody in administrative role, but with a master's degree, which at some point in time may be a little bit overkill. But again, if you look at for a city manager, that's probably just in line. The only other thing that I really want to try and get you all to really discuss is that maybe if you have a few candidates come in, and one is a Rolling Meadows resident, and the others aren't, that Rolling Meadows resident should get a higher foot up, because we have to get this city back under control with the residents. And if you've got a city manager that lives in the city, it would be more agreeable that people would want to say, yeah, we've got him, he's got our ear, and he'll listen to us. So I think that's all I've got to say. You can vote as you will, and I'm going to leave again.
Thank you, Mr. Hollish. Okay. Now we move on to the next topic, which is the stormwater drainage program presentation. Director Horn?
Thank you, Alderman Bessesi. I have put on your dais a hardcover of the presentation, just so you can see a little more clearly. The monitors are a little far away. I apologize, some of the animations are blocking the full view, so I'll do my best on those. It's a little interesting to do a presentation this way, so I'll do my best to keep eye contact. Drainage problems are significant in a lot of communities, and that's no different in the city of Rolling Meadows. But I think it's important, especially with new Aldermen on the council, that you get a little understanding of some of the challenges that Rolling Meadows deals with, that maybe some communities don't. The first thing is, there are, there are three issues that generally we've categorized as issues that City of Rolling Meadows deals with. One are self-inflicted impacts, things that residents do to themselves unknowingly. The other thing is systematic problems. You know, the lack of regulation when most of the community was built out lends itself to drainage problems just by virtue of not taking into consideration the problems that could occur. And then lastly, is the thing that we are all dealing with, which is the climate impact, and the way that's affected our storms. It used to be that our storms would, or our rainstorms would happen over 24-hour, 36-hour periods. We'd get long, steady, slow storms. Well, now we get five inches in five hours, and then it's gone for two weeks. As a result, that causes major flooding concerns that generally go away within a week, but that doesn't make residents happy when they're dealing with a large puddle in their backyard. So I'm just going to walk through some of these slides, just to give you a flavor of what some of the problems are. So many of the systems in our older communities, older sections of the community are 10-inch pipes. 10-inch pipes do not even meet the minimum requirement for a subdivision now through MWRD regulations. All the storm sewer pipes are much larger. It is not abnormal to see 24-inch pipes as the normal outfall for a subdivision. Additionally, detention and retention areas. So I took a little snippet from Google. This is a community, northern community, not wealthy by any means, a nearby Vernon Hills, just to give you an idea. They didn't start building out that parts, those parts of the community until after the stormwater regulations were in effect. So you'll notice on the left, a lot of blue dots. Those are all stormwater features that were installed and required to be installed by a government agency of the developer. You see in the map on the right, that's Rolling Meadows, a similar-sized area with one blue dot. And everything else is really just a yard or a roadway. So that, that lends itself to the problems we, we deal with. Another big part problem are the self-inflicted issues. So, and I will, I'm going to jump back and forth with these slides, because I just couldn't line them up the way I wanted. So most drainage easements are located at the property line along the side yard. These four properties I took a picture of on the same street, within about 300 feet of each other. So the idea that these are not unique properties, this is everywhere along the entire community. And you see, it's board-on-board fence, all the way down to the dirt, right up against each other, or garages, or sheds, right on the property lines. That's where, 40 or 50 years ago, when these subdivisions were built, the drainage easements were, and that's where the drainage ran. This is a example, I just created this really quick on Excel to show you what happens. If you're looking, kind of, if you're like a mouse looking down a ditch line, if a resident were to want to extend their yard a little to the property line and level it out, they might put some four-by-fours and build that grade up, and then put a fence in, and it doesn't really hurt them at all, right? But look what it does to the neighboring property. So that blue line is where it normally, the, the flow of the water is normally, but when they put that obstruction within the ditch line, well, now that red line is now the normal water level, and you can see how it pushes the limits of the water much closer to the other property, and then sometimes, and sometimes all the way to their house. Now, this is very dramatic ditch, you know, it looks like it's maybe two feet deep, but in a lot of cases, it's only six inches. So when they do that, it can push that all the way to their house, because the grade is very level. So this is something I wanted to show you, is some of the problems with, again, the stockade fences, something we discussed when we talked about community development and permitting and things like that. You know, there is a very high premium on getting permits issued quickly, fences, out the door quickly, sheds, out the door quickly. Well, things get missed when that happens. So when you look at a plaid of survey, and it simply shows a, a green outline with a highlighter showing where you're going to put the fence, and our staff looks at it, and it looks okay, they don't take the time to go look into a, into the file and look at a plaid of subdivision to see what they're missing. Well, that's where you run into issues where someone puts a plat, a fence right through a drainage easement. Now that's a very, what do you call it, elaborate or overblown example, but that happens all the time in this community, because the swales are so minimal. One of the best examples I, I found was the, the kind of graphic that, where it says rear-to-front drainage. Almost the entire community has established this way, where the water is graded, the land is graded in the rear yard, it's designed to run to the, to both side yards, and then run down to the front, right? That's out to the street. That's almost, our entire community is built that way. Well, when we go back, how is, those are all side yard, property lines. How is water going to get from the rear yard to the front yard? It's impossible. And so when that's everywhere, that's some of the challenges we're running up against. The other thing that's more of a systematic issue is how these subdivisions were developed. Boy, I wish I could stand, but the, the image on the left is the topography. It shows how the developer designed the water to run, you know, years ago. It's going to run through all these backyards and meander its way all the way out to, I think that's Dove Street. Well, if you look on the picture on the right, this is the same area, but the way the water really runs is that middle arrow. It actually ran right through someone's yard, right into their house, and went, really enveloped their whole house. Now, you'll see a bunch of storm sewer manholes in the street right out there. That's a situation where we couldn't correct the problem at the source, so we made improvements in conjunction with our water main project that we did there two years ago, to alleviate that stormwater problem to the best of our ability. And, and that really gets to the heart of the program we're now implementing that we hadn't done in the past, and I'll get back to that. Here's just a quick graphic, I thought it was good, that I found online, that really shows the impact of, of our regional precipitation, and it, and it boils it down to different areas of Illinois and Indiana, Wisconsin. But ultimately, if you look at the black line, we've increased almost six inches or more of, of rain. That's in, back in the 2010s. So I don't know what it's been in the last 10 years, but ultimately, that rain, those rainfalls increase. So we are getting more intensive, more often rains. I understand there's little blips, like we're going through a drought right now. It's hard to argue that we're getting too much rain, but. So I just wanted to touch also on our, our program that was done, I'll just say, prior to 2015. Historically, this is the one that's referenced in our ordinance, and that has been implemented by our Public Works staff. We have GIS that has tracked the areas in which we did a program. It's a good tool, but staff is working with GIS to create a better tool. Right now, this just shows what was done. It really doesn't even show what was done. It actually is a red mark showing something was done, and then when you click that, there's a document in there, where you have to read it. So what we're hoping to do is establish a GIS layer that talks about when we inspected it, the severity of it, the type of drainage problem it is, so we can start doing some of these mass improvements that kind of tackle many problems at once. This is really the, the biggest problem with the backyard drainage program that was in the past. The drainage pipe that was installed was really an inferior material, not at the fault of the staff, that's the product that was used. The problem with that is, you'll notice the image on the left, there are holes in the pipe. That's called perforated pipe. What we've learned over the last 20 years is that perforated pipe is for collecting water. It is not for moving water. So moving water should be solid pipe. So what happens is, after 10 years, the picture on the right is what the pipe on the left looks like. And the problem is, to clean that material out, you need one of these tools. And to clean that pipe out with that tool is useless, because all it's going to do is tear the pipe apart. And so by the time you're done cleaning, there will be no pipe left. So it was a good-intentioned program to put the maintenance responsibility on the homeowner, but there's really no way to maintain that type of pipe. There, there's just no way to do it. So again, those solutions were beneficial to a lot of residents, but they all have a sunset on their life that's, that's not as long as residents would hope. One of the examples I want to show you, and it's really hard to tell, but I'll just explain it to you, there's a, a big block of land, of area to the, would be to the east of that slide, and it all flows down between these 10 or 12 homes. Well, there's a huge grade change, as you can see there, so the, the swale, the center of the swale already pushes to the east. And what happened in that area is several of the residents changed hands, changed hands on the west side, and all these residents came in and put up fences. And guess where they drilled the post holes? Right through the pipe. So the pipe is now useless. It, it, it would cost more money to fix it than it would to put a whole new system in. I say that it's not feasible to put that system in, because this is what every backyard looks like. And if you look at that edge of brick on, on the bottom there that's holding in that landscaping bed, that's the center of the swale. So when we talk about grading inside a swale, all that soil that's been added in there is now pushing all that water to the west properties. And again, this is just an example, that's the very downstream property, but that issue happens all the way up there, and that, that water is impacted by many residents. All the properties to the east run their water through that system, and as a result of, you know, just kind of unintended consequences, this is what results. So, and if there's any questions, please feel free to stop me, but I was asked to go quick. So the current drainage program efforts, I want to ensure, assure the council that we are doing a lot to solve drainage problems in the community. You might not see it on individual properties, but we're doing a ton. We have a multi-layered approach, something we are talking about, which we will talk about in the future, is kind of refining the drainage assistance program that we currently have, making it a little more collaborative with the resident, getting multiple buy-in from both the city and the resident. That is referenced in the first two items, with public works assistance, then a professional engineer assessment, which we're working with the city engineer to develop. We have minor repairs, which are things that are done by the city staff, which they make improvements all year long, backyard stuff that exists now. They fix manholes, they clean out lines, they, our lining program rehabilitates old, broken-down lines, so they're, they're, they don't get blocked up or, or collapse. We also have the, the big one that we We also have, the big one that we do now, that really, the two big ones that we do now, that really were not a priority prior to 2016, are the major repairs and major capital projects. So what we're doing with the major repairs and enhancements is, as our staff and the city engineer meet with residents, they start tracking these problems, similar to how I said we were going to do it on GIS. But we start putting them on a list of projects or priorities. And what we do is, we develop the list this year, and then we prioritize those and try and do the top seven to 10 the following year. And when we make these enhancements, we don't make them to help one resident. We help blocks, or we help, you know, subdivisions, or we help cul-de-sacs. We try to help multiple residents. And what we're really trying to do is we're trying to provide residents the opportunity to help themselves. So that means we're putting storm sewer systems in that they can connect to with their own private system, similar to the black piping that we showed, that they can have a landscaper install and just help their single property. So again, Public Works Assessment is something I just talked about. I should have scrolled through these. Professional Engineers Assessment Report, a big part of that is, we have found through discussions with other communities that have similar programs, that residents are more apt to listen to a professional engineer than a Public Works employee. So when somebody actually does a professional report, and that resident has invested money in that, the engineer is now not working for the city and telling the resident what the city wants them to hear. He's telling the resident what's the reality of the situation. So we feel like adding that to our approach to handling drainage problems will be a huge Drainage system installations, these kind of installations for, even for a single-family home, they take professional experience and knowledge. Most people understand that water runs downhill, right? But that doesn't mean you can design a stormwater system that will last the test of time and serve your needs over a long period of time. And that, I show you those because both of those systems, you can tell were designed by a professional, because that's just not how those things get installed by a, you know, just if you hired a landscaper for $1,000. Rain gardens, so this is a great example. If you look at the picture on the left, this is a lot of our problems in the city of Rolling Meadows. Water that's two inches deep over the entirety of their backyard. What a rain garden does is it consolidates the water to a specific location. The water will stand, but because of the type of plant material you plant there, it really sucks the water down and drinks the water in a very quick time. So the reality is usually residents will say, "You got to help me with my drainage problem. I can't use my backyard." The great thing about rain gardens is if they're properly designed and properly located, they give you back your backyard. You might just have to stay out of the back corner. But these are a really important tool in the city, and we're really going to start pushing the use of rain gardens. We're going to talk to our city engineer about developing plan specifications where residents can just use those. Just go right online and find that. So I want to pay close attention to that, though, because it is a very beneficial tool to all residents. Yeah, rain gardens work. I'm late on that. So yeah, these are the kind of projects our staff does in-house. They'll do little crossings, little projects that they can handle and that are not time-sensitive, usually located in the right-of-way. Here's an example. I'm going to try and point this out. Does this have a... Well, I'll do my best. This is an example of a project we would contract out, that would be part of our major projects, but not a full-blown capital project. There's a section in the middle of the two roadways that you see a lot of number 718 right in the center. That indicates that that's a low area that holds water. Okay? That's a lot of this community is that way. And if you look at the roadway to the west, there's no piping for those people. So what we may consider doing, the extent to which we want to go into backyards, would be that blue line, the dark blue line. What we might do is we might put a manhole into our city right-of-way and run a pipe out to the backyard where the low area is. That enables our staff to maintain that line from the right-of-way. So we can pull our equipment up in the roadway and flush that line out without having to drag equipment into the backyard. What then, this is where the homeowner has to enable, or take the opportunity to help themselves. So those little skinny blue lines, those would be private lines that each individual resident would come to the city, get a permit, minimum fee permit, and they would run their own little line out, put a little drainage basin in their yard to collect that water. The reality is if we did this occasionally, most of our rain problems, our backyard drainage problems would be resolved. The residents also can cooperate with each other, which I show on the one, the one little, I guess it would be considered the southwest line. If the homeowner installed a little structure, a little drain to collect water, they could allow their neighbor to connect to that and run to their property. But in all of those cases, when they have a problem with their pipe, we as a staff have to have the comfort level to say, "I'm sorry, that's not ours to maintain. That's not ours to repair." What's happened over time is because the city was intimately involved with the thing that happened in their backyard, they feel like we have culpability, we have responsibility for it. Especially as residents change hands, those agreements that we had them sign when it was installed are not recorded against the property. So they're only valid to the homeowner who signed it. So usually 10 years from now, you might have had a property change hands two or three times by then. So again, I just showed the aerial. This is that exact same location I just showed. The reason I'm showing you the aerial is you can see why putting piping in backyards is not an easy proposition when you're trying to do a comprehensive repair for a whole group of homes. It's just not reasonable to have the city back in that area. We would have to remove, you know, hundreds of feet of fence. We'd have to take down landscaping, move sheds. It's just not reasonable. And again, when you put these things in, you need to stay within an easement, right? So you only have 10 feet to deal with to begin with. So it's just not room in most of the community to do these kind of repairs. Again, something we're working with GIS to do, another layer to our program, is to incorporate known drainage problems, significant drainage problems that hold multiple people into our normal capital project planning. So in other words, I mean, I can tell you that on average since 2016, we've probably spent between $60,000 and $100,000 per year on our resurfacing program specifically dedicated to drainage problems. And that's significant. That's not $3,000 to three residents to put a four-inch pipe in there. You know, we're doing big things, and I think it's important that the council knows that. So some of the capital projects, I think, are good examples. We did a Water Main project in 2016 on Theta in Fremont over by the South Park. I think it's called South Park. All the pipe you see there, with the exception of about 100 feet immediately north of Fremont adjacent to the park, was installed as part of our Water Main project. We have had, I think, maybe one complaint since that was put in. Prior to that, we got complaints every single time it rains, and multiple complaints. This is the area out west, Arlington, Arlingtondale area. Every piece of pipe that's circled in green was installed as part of our road resurface, our road reconstruction program. That's 22 different homes that were helped to provide drainage, the opportunity for a resident to fix their own drainage problem. And then something current, Sunset Brookview, we're doing the sewer project over there as part of next phase's, the next year's phase project. We're going to be doing storm sewer improvements in that green area, which really will help the entire subdivision and will help the roadway, which currently overflows with water during high rain events and actually has to be closed for periods of time. So this is just a recap of the different programs we have. We spend, I can't remember the number, but well over $200,000, not including specific drainage program projects. I actually think we're more in the neighborhood of $3,500 to $400,000 if we include our lining program. I think this is the more advantageous approach to helping people with drainage problems. We don't tell anybody that there's nothing we can do, but we do tell people that it might be a while before we can help them. We also very often give the tools for residents to help themselves, and very often, residents are not interested in those options. They want to know what the city's going to do. And we have to start encouraging our residents to help themselves a little as well. There are some residents out there, my heart goes out, there's literally nothing they can do. They're stuck. And we'll do everything we can to help those residents, but those are very far and few between. Most residents have room to put in a rain garden, and that's at least a step in the right direction. So that's really the presentation. There are some questions in here that I wanted to ask for a variety of reasons. So really, if Alderman Basessi wouldn't mind just, or if you'd like me, I can read each one.
Well, I was just going to go bullet point by bullet point, and we can just have that discussion.
Sure.
And get you some answers on some of these.
Sure. The one thing I would like to tell you about is, okay, the last two items, the reason I asked those are not entirely congruent with this presentation. The stormwater credit issue, so we have residents pay a stormwater fee annually. Some communities will give a 25%, 50% rebate if a resident puts significant investment in their property to reduce drainage problems. So example, installing a rain garden that works, you know, redirecting their gutters out of the storm sewer into a open area. Things that, you know, we could develop criteria on those. That's just to get an idea of how you feel about it. I do understand that that taps into revenue that the city's collecting, which is why I asked the fifth question, which is, is there interest in reviewing the stormwater fee that we currently collect? There's two reasons for that. The first reason is, I've been in discussions with a company called Errors and our GIS consultant to get the, get cost estimates of what it would take to reevaluate our impervious surface information. So back in 2006 or so, as part of our stormwater fee, there was an assessment done of our community to see what the normal impervious surface was, and that's the criteria that was used against the rate to determine what large commercial buildings would pay. Well, over time, they don't always tell us when they've expanded their parking lot, or that information doesn't always get collected through the building permit process. So every once in a while, 10, 15 years, we should do this assessment. So part of doing that assessment is to determine whether we should look at that issue comprehensively, or we're happy where the rate is, just look at the impervious surface on its own merits. So those are the, a little history behind those two questions. And then I'll, I'm happy to give it over to you, Alderman Basessi.
So I guess what we can do is just go, he's got five bullet points here that he's looking for some direction on. So the first one is, should the program provide additional financial assistance for senior residents? Is there anyone that has any discussion on that? Alderman, Snooka?
Yeah. Mayor Protem, can you open the floor for just general discussion before we get to the bullet points? Would that be all right?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So we'll open the floor to general discussion. Alderman, Snooka?
Certainly. Thank you very much, Director Horn, for that presentation. I know that this is an issue that's very important to many of my residents. It's one of the major complaints that I will receive from various groups within Ward 7. And I know that many residents are long-term individuals that have lots of interactions with your office and your staff regarding these issues as well. Some individuals that have been helped in the past with some of the improvements that you've discussed today, and others who are still trying to find solutions. And we're in discussions regarding those items. I also wanted to provide the council with some perspective from the Environmental Committee, back when it was an ad hoc committee. Some of these items were discussed in a more informal, in a more informal setting, especially the rain gardens item, and especially the incentive for a credit. And all of the members on that committee have been very eager to assist the council in either providing additional information from a resident's perspective, and also willing to provide outreach and education regarding that specific item, which really doesn't have that much of a cost to the city aside from whether or not we want to implement a credit program and the management of that program. So for example, if we were to say, a rain garden that works, as Director Horn put it, that would require some expertise, which we do have residents that have working rain gardens or working rain barrels. That doesn't require the millions of dollars that we have seen before for stormwater management that we would require from the city, or that take between five and 10 years. And the reason why we discuss that is either we lean into this and become the Venice of the Midwest, or we end up having to come up with these more creative, long-term solutions. So I wanted the council to be aware of where that's coming from, and also the research, of course, that Director Horn and his staff have done into that particular item for us. So I do have a couple of questions regarding the permitting process. You mentioned earlier that when staff are, when they have express permits for smaller projects like sheds and fences, sometimes we might miss this, the item of stormwater retention. And I wanted to ask if that issue has been addressed in current ERP programming, or do we have an automatic flag for stormwater considerations or anything of that nature?
I'll let you go, and then I'll...
Yes. We have discussed, when Director Horn was talking about that, I think it was mostly for the situations that exist in the field today and missing those things in the past. We recognize that, and as a result, when we get those, we do tend to try to use either Google Maps or GIS, or if we need to take a trip out. The other issue that makes that hard sometimes in the express permits is a lot of times residents don't have copies of their plats of survey. And even though the code requires some sort of a plat of survey, it can be expensive if they can't find one, or we don't have a copy, and we do our best. So we'll actually say, "We can take the time to go out and do that, but we need to spend a little time doing it." So we do try to do that to make sure that we don't run into those issues moving forward.
I just want to add on to that. That's one of the main reasons we developed a position that's called Building and Engineering Inspector, so they will focus on their, those tools. Additionally, the city staff has tools available to it that were not there 15 years ago, 20 years ago. The ability to, well, you saw the topography I can look at. Our staff can look at that and in 30 seconds have a decision. They can see it's not an issue. They can look at the aerial, see it's not an issue. Some of those things can be seen much quicker now, and previous staffs just didn't have that. And, you know, you don't want to turn a resident away because they didn't have the proper plat, you know, for their fence. I mean, I can understand that being an issue in the past.
Thank you for that, thank you for that background, because I know that I have had residents who do have flooding issues, and when they've spoken with, you know, previous administrations and previous directors, they were informed that, yes, in fact, this probably should not have been approved, but it has been, and this is the state of affairs. And so as long as the staff recognizes that and has implemented procedures going forward to rectify, you know, future decision-making, I think that that would be helpful to avoid very expensive repairs. I've also had residents that have reached out and conducted significant, you know, tens of thousands of dollars to a... tens of thousands of dollars to address the grading of their own, of their own yards to prevent flooding, and flooding into their homes as well. This isn't just stand, I know that we have had many complaints about standing water for several days.
Yeah.
But also I have received photos, videos of residents with water rushing into their homes. So I, and I also, I know we're going to get to this point as well, but I wanted the council to know that this is not, you know, when we're talking about creating financing for seniors, this isn't just a senior problem. If we have issues that are in tens of thousands of dollars, many residents find that that is just not attainable. Flooding isn't really covered under insurance, and for those that do have flooding insurance, it's difficult sometimes to get those disbursements. So any type of financing or credit that we could provide for residents, I think, should expand beyond just seniors for making sure that we're developing these properties and making sure that the values of the properties are maintained from this flooding damage, or potential flooding damage as well. And I would want the council to consider that if we have that financing available, you know, it might not just have to be for drainage, that this is something we could perhaps extend for other improvements to properties as well. So I don't want to focus on that necessarily, but I would like everyone in the council to consider this as a pilot program to expand for improvements in the future. If this works well for drainage, maybe then this can be something else where, if we're interested in improvements in residential properties, this works well, then, you know, we can, we can expand the program.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that needs general?
That was funny. I kind of had the same comment, not just seniors, but my question is leveraging our experience from the snow removal service, and I'm pretty on the spot, but it's like, do we have a ballpark estimate of staff types? I'm guessing, I know I've helped a couple residents with the senior snowplow removal, and I know it's based on income level. From a staff perspective, is it almost just easier to say, I'm making this number up, 10% discount regardless of me submitting, I know it's not a W-2, but submitting paperwork and stuff to staffers versus just doing a flat percent?
I guess, I guess it depends, right? So it's, there's a couple factors here, right? So we have to determine what qualifies for assistance, right? Do we just want to help everyone regardless? I mean, what if the problem that's there is something they have to do, like say, cutting the bottom four inches of the funds off? Do we want to pay for that to be done? How do we determine who's qualified and who isn't, just from an issue standpoint? The other reason, and this is where, and I don't want to sound like I'm not open to the idea of financing residential projects, but this is why I focused it on seniors, because I understand the will of the council on a lot of other matters are to help those less fortunate or on a fixed income that can't physically deal with their problem. And again, I'm, but you know, it's hard to be equal across the board when one person might be easily able to resolve their problem with no assistance from anybody, but they just get the benefit of it because we offer it, you know what I mean? And I understand there's a gain for the city in that, because we don't spend all that time going out to inspect it year over year. But again, I, the one thing I hesitate about is how we administer something like that, because again, I can only speak to what I've experienced here in the last five or six years, and that is, once we are part of their improvement, it's our problem forever. And I'm, you know, I'm not going to be here forever, but I'm thinking about the next director, or the next counselor, you know, the next person who's got to go out there and say, that's not ours, that's yours, and what are we hanging our hat on? And that's my concern. And I'm not saying it can't be done, I just say that's the one trepidation I have. At least if there was a senior, we could say that, you know, whether it's a credit on their storm sewer, or whether, whatever that thing is, that we could say it was for that period of time while that person lived here. And now that that person's gone, whatever happens is no longer valid, or whatever. That was just my own thoughts, so.
Alderman Snika?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I guess I would clarify as to having financing available, I also would agree with Director Horn that we don't necessarily have to pay for these improvements. I wouldn't want to give the impression that the city is then responsible for the maintenance, when it's clearly not. But what I'm saying is that if for one resident, or who's affected by multiple residents, what have you, if they are, need to put in improvements that are in tens of thousands of dollars, and they can't, then I would like for the city to have an option to say, well, there are funds available, and either if we say, and they're not available this year, but they're available next year, and here's how you apply, and it's a simple process. We wouldn't want to give them a booklet of items or qualifications, because that's not helpful for our city clerk, that's not helpful for our city staff, you know, basic components of whether or not they qualify, something simple, but something effective. I understand what you're saying about, if you're a senior on a fixed income, then that's really easy since we already do that. But I also know that it's not just seniors where this is difficult, right?
And I would just add on to that, I agree 100%, and that's the philosophical shift we've had, is we don't talk about those things anymore. If there's a problem that's going to affect people, we put it on the list, you guys give us money every year to make those correct, we are spending that money. You will see, at the end of the year, we will have no money in that budget, because we use it all to help people with their drainage problems. So the issue you talk about there, very similar to that sample I showed you with the blue line, if we have to do that every other property four times to take care of a whole block, we're just going to do it. We're not going to ask any money from the residents, we're going to say, here's the, here's the improvement, get a permit and run your system how you need to run it, we'll help you design it, we'll help you put it in the right way, we'll make sure that you don't install it to cause yourself problems in the future. Boom. Like that, that's what I feel like our role is as a, as a Public Works Department, as a city, for the money we collect for stormwater management, is to make those corrections or make those opportunities available to residents. So I think I'm right on the same page with you in that regard.
Then I suppose then I would just want to know what the, at this point, if city staff knows what the percentage is between costs that are required of the resident to be able to hook up, for example, to these systems, and how much of this is a system change?
So, you know, just looking at it from like a standard residential lot, if they were to put a couple drain pipes down and then run it down to a system that we had installed, say, in the right of way, I'm expecting anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000 for a larger lot. It could be less. The one thing I pointed out in my memo is, a lot of the work that can be done, this type of work can be done by a landscaper. That's why I'm working with the city engineer to come up with a pricing plan to do more formal engineering for residents who are doing these kind of projects, so they can install it the right way, so regardless if they hire a contractor that, you know, that we don't have experience with, that it will be installed appropriately to be long-lasting. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, I wanted to know what percentage of these, of the issues and the complaints that we have from our data so far are from residents being able to disconnect in that $5,000 to $6,000 range, and others where residents that have come to me and said, this is a $16,000 bill that I am required to pay.
So I think most of the problems that we're running into are the $3,000 to $5,000 one in the person's backyard, and of those, a pretty significant percentage are the result of the fact that we don't have a system near their, their property. The community was built in such a way that they would slope the streets down to the inlets at the intersections, and there would be no pipe along, along the way. Well, that was great when the subdivision was built, and there was nice defined ditchlines, and nobody had a fence, and nobody had a shed. Well, fast forward 50 years, there's no drainage system in the backyards anymore. That swale, whatever swale, is long gone, and there's no way to solve the problem. So that's why we're trying to spend significant dollars in the right of way to make the problem solvable for those residents that want to solve it.
Thank you, Director Horn. So we're, we're on the same page when it comes to that aspect of the development. So what I want to clarify for the city council then is, I still think that it would be helpful for us to consider financing for that last hookup, for that $3,000, $5,000, or $3,000 to $5,000 for that hookup for those that can't, and for us to have some sort of easy qualifications for those that would be eligible or ineligible for that program. And there was one other item that had come up during this discussion, and I think it was regarding the, whether you had a landscaper or not, who would give the connection to the easements, or the drainage items in the easements. I think that it would be really helpful for us to have some vendors that are preferred vendors, just like we did for wildlife removal, both for pricing and also just to give residents an idea of where to start if they've never done this before. So I would also be in favor of that as well.
That's question number two.
Yeah. So is there any more discussion on?
Thank you. So I'm obviously in favor of the financial assistance for senior residents. Director Horn and I have talked at great lengths about senior programming, and this was one of the things that we had talked about, including in building up that senior program. Just that on a senior fixed income, they couldn't even qualify for financial, you know, a loan. They just wouldn't even qualify. And so, and most of the residents in that, those subdivisions that are flooding are original homeowners that are on those fixed incomes. You know, so I would definitely be in favor, you know, of that, that program of what that would look like. And then that would be something to future look at in developing in our senior program that, you know, we want to continue to work on. And then the other one with, I like the idea of doing, of what the Environmental Committee had suggested on doing credits, because I think that sometimes, as much as we want to do improvements to our property, sometimes we just kind of need a little shove to do it. I mean, and so what incentive do you have if you're going to get a rebate on, on a fee that you don't have to pay? But I like the idea of having some guidance. I mean, I would, I mean, I'm a gardener, but I would have no idea how to do a rain garden. So I think that's a good idea, that we do have that assistance in order to, and how that would look, and, and get those parameters met before those credits would be given would be great. And I think residents might actually be drawn to more of that, you know, if there's an opportunity there, so I'm definitely in favor of looking that, looking into that further. So that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman McHale?
Yeah. I've gone, there have been many residents in our area, you're laughing. We've had many, many conversations about drainage issues. And one of the things that came up, we had Kevin from the Water Department come out, and we actually walked around my neighborhood looking at the different, you know, things that were happening, Weekend Warrior projects, that they put their garden in the back corner, and then it blocks all the drainage coming down. When you look down the backyards, there's all the overgrown trees and everything like that. I wonder if there's a way to have a checklist or something before we, well, did you try A, B, C, and D if you were in your yard? We had a resident that was just plagued with her garden, or with her backyard being flooded out, and her and her backyard neighbor figured out that it was a landscaping issue, it was very easily remedied, and years of this, and tons of money, and it was a very simple fix. So I don't know if there's like, I love my pamphlets, if there's a way to like say, this is, this is the problems, did you try A, B, and C? And then move on from there, then, and I know some of the issues are much, much larger than that, but there are some simple ones that I think, I took a shed down, and my mind is gone, my flooding was gone. So just a thought there.
Yeah, and I agree with that, and that's why we think it's really important to get an engineer's assessment and report, because a lot of times, you know, people are not willing to remove their shed, or not willing to remove that landscaping bed, and at least if we can identify, you know, in our GIS, that that's a known drainage problem, but it's a, you know, we'll call it the unintended or self-inflicted problem, you know, at least, you know, part of this is giving our staff something to hang their hat on when they go out to an angry resident, and we can look back and say, I'm really sorry, but we've told you that the problem is your shed, and you're unwilling to move it five feet closer to your house, which is what's causing the problem. And, you know, and we keep talking about this like we're talking to the resident who has the issue. You know, a lot of times it's the resident whose neighbor has the shed that's five feet. And so, you know, when you deal with that issue, just on that one issue, that takes an enormous amount of staff time. Now you compound that and try and work with eight people on a line that you're going to, it's, the staff time is just ridiculous, so. But point taken.
Alderman Snika?
I just wanted to echo Alderman McHale's comment. I did have a resident that reached out to me, well, I reached out to them, because I hadn't heard from them in a while, and usually I hear from them during every storm. And when I asked, they said, well, it ended up being a crack in their basement foundation. So I agree with having that preliminary checklist to ensure that it doesn't require thousands of dollars to fix. Thank you.
If I could just mention one thing, and I don't, I'm only bringing it up because you just mentioned something, and I didn't bring it up in the presentation, it's important for everyone to know, we're starting to track the historical data from these rain events. I don't know if you read it in the memo, but last spring, we had a rain event that provided like five and a half inches of rain, 5.9 inches of rain, I believe, in a 36-hour period, or something like that. It generated between 20 and 30 complaints, drainage complaints. We had that exact same rain about three weeks ago, I think, two or three weeks ago. We had less than two complaints. And the one complaint wasn't really a drainage complaint, they just were complaining about the water. So that's why we have to track the historical significance of some of these things, because we don't want to overreact, put in a big system to handle this big problem that only happened because we had had the wettest spring on record for the last 50 years, or something like that. So I know it has nothing to do with what we just talked about, but you reminded me about it, and I think it's important that you guys know that.
Okay. Is there any more questions or comments? Okay, we'll kind of, I still want to make sure we get him his, all of his guidance, although I think we've hit most of these bullet points already. The first one, should the program provide financial assistance? And I've stricken senior residents, basically residents in need, would probably be a, my, at least if everybody would agree, my, my assessment is, is there'd be some sort of a criteria that has to be satisfied and, for that, and I'm hoping that captures the spirit of what you were talking about, Alderman Snika.
Sure, I will second that, Mayor Proton.
Okay. Is all in favor of that being part of it? Okay, it's unanimous. The next one is, should the program, should staff attempt to create a pool of pre-qualified contractors provide residents? All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Is the council interested in paying a percentage of residents' private property improvement as it relates to stormwater management? Okay, this one might need a little discussion. Nope. Okay, all in favor of that?
That was, that was the credit, correct? No?
The credit, no, this is just straight.
Yeah, how is, I got a, I got a question. How does that differ from number one?
So if I can just explain?
Okay.
It was provided separately, your conversation steered you away from the senior issue. So what we will do is really, Alderman Besessi, we can avoid that question, what we will do is provide pricing options for residents, period, residents on a fixed income, senior residents, we can provide you guys with some options when we come back to you that can generate some conversation and see what, which one you're in favor of, which one you're not. We have to look at the potential impacts to the budget, either positive or negative as well, so I think we captured the answer to three in the discussion of one.
Okay. Does the council have interest in implementing a stormwater management fee credit? Okay, it's unanimous. Does the council want to consider an increase in stormwater management fee? Does the council want to consider an increase in stormwater management fee? I think it's something to discuss and consider, too. So all in favor? It's unanimous?
And Director Horn, that was because you had said it's about time to do a reassessment, correct? Because it's, you said about 10 years or so?
Yeah, it's been since, I'm assuming prior that all the research was done at least a year prior to the implementation of the fee. When the stormwater fee was implemented, the fee was $2.63. It's now, I think, something around $4.75. Just by happenstance, I found two or three other communities in my research for backyard drainage programs, their fees, I put in my report over 10, their fees are over $13. Our own city engineer lives in a community just south of here, and he's paying like $13.45, $13.45 a month. So again, I'm not saying we're not able to do what you want to do, but it might be a time to consider that, so we make sure we keep up with the rising costs of labor and materials and those types of things.
And just to follow up, and then if you come back to us with more information on this, on approximately to get that report or assessment done, what that would entail as far as costs?
Oh, sure. I already have a, a item. I'm not going to do that this year. I'm going to put that in the capital plan, so it's something we can discuss with the capital projects committee, and that will be provided in future years, and we'll tie the two together.
Thank you.
Okay, so just to, just to clarify, you're not, you're not looking at this to be something that's part of our budget for, for next year. So I just want to let the residents.
Yeah, just something I want to research.
Know if you're listening, we're not all of a sudden going to raise it to $13.
No, no.
So, so it's just something to be looked at to see what's needed.
Sure, thank you.
I think that's all of them. Do you need another? I think we pretty much covered it with, with all of these.
No, thank you for your time. I appreciate, I appreciate, I know it's not an easy subject to discuss, so thank you.
Yes, well, thank you. Okay, moving on. Our next topic, I believe, was the, okay, assistant manager position discussion. I'm not sure who was going to, who was this one?
I can just provide an introduction on that. So this matter is now up for discussion by the council and direction regarding the actual creation of the assistant city manager position for the city. In the packet materials, the council has been given the proposed job description for that position, along with an update that was previously prepared by Manager Crumstock that identified a proposed management regarding the creation, the filling, and the funding options for the position. This is the time for the council to discuss any, you know, direction the council would like to go with the actual creation and implementation of the position.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just going to start out. I'm thinking the first question is if this is something that we're looking, given our current situation with the city manager, if this is something we want to move forward on right now, given that we may want whoever our potential future city manager might be to have input on, on this topic. And help, because I'm sure one of their first responsibilities will be to take a look at our structure and some of those things. So I'm wondering if this is something that needs to be delayed, or if there's something we can do to at least establish that there is an assistant city manager position. I'm just looking for a discussion on that. Yeah, Melissa.
So if the position, if the council goes the direction that they would like the position created, the city code would need to be amended to provide for that position. And as, as you had referenced, the city manager is the official with the authority to actually hire the assistant city manager. So, you know, there would be a timing issue that you should discuss with respect to the, any kind of implementation of the position. But a first step would be to council to actually pass an ordinance to create, to amend the city code to create that position, if that's the direction the council wants to go.
So in light of our current vacant position of going to have a city manager vacancy, I
do want to have that person's input on the actual job description. However, I don't feel that it's, the focus of this council has changed on wanting an assistant city manager. So I would hope that council will move forward in creating the ordinance to pass the position to move forward, because that has always been our intention, since we created this goal, if I recall, a year and a half ago. That was always our intention. So despite the fact that we are currently seeking a new or will be seeking a new city manager, this does not change, other than the fact that our new city manager may have some more input on this. So I think as a council, we still need to move forward.
Any other, Alderman O'Brien?
I was going to say, I'm still not sold on the need for it, and I think this is even more reason to pause until that there is a full-time city manager in place, because we don't know what he or she may want to do. Is I'm not opposed, I think the job descriptions are all written. I like the dates. I know the dates are included. I know that's been adjusted based on what's happened recently, but based on resident input I've heard since this has been in the open forum, I'm not sold on the need for it yet. And I wouldn't want to have the need there and a new city manager come in and say, we don't need it. Or maybe we do need it. So I would just ask that we put it on pause until we have a plan going forward for a new city manager and what type of structure they're looking for. That's just my thought. I'm, I'm still not sold on the need for the position overall.
Alderman Snoyka.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I was looking forward to having some discussion with our, with Manager Crumstock about what he, in addition to the write-up that he had, to make sure that redundancies were addressed, and also ensuring that workload or other priorities were properly addressed with this new position. So I would agree with Alderman O'Brien in this instance to postpone any further discussion or straw votes or direction at this time while we continue with the process of the, of the city manager.
Is there any other discussion? Alderman Snoyka?
I agree with Alderman Snoyka. I believe that the city assistant city manager position will be an important role. I was looking through the, in an effort to prepare for this topic, I had asked for the job descriptions of other city jobs right now, and there does seem to be a lot of redundancy. And I think that this is a prime opportunity for us to take a look at the staffing needs and make sure we have everybody supported in the most appropriate ways. So at this time, in light of everything that is happening, I too would move to postpone for now, but with the intention that this will more than likely be a, I would be in support of hiring an assistant city manager.
Alderman Snoyka.
I just want to clarify with Attorney Wolf. What we're asking to be passed would be an ordinance not in the job descriptions, just to for the position, correct, of an assistant city manager and job title, correct? Not the job descriptions, because that's set forth by the city manager?
In the city code, for many of the offices or positions of the city, it does identify their job duties. So that's where the job description may be relevant with respect to the primary job duties of that specific position. So if there is any kind of amendment to the city code to create the position, it would include that kind of information as well.
Thank you. So with that information, obviously, then we do have to postpone it, because the job description is going to be changed, I would hope, by the new city manager. But I'm going to respectfully disagree with Alderman O'Brien, because the situation that we're in right now is a prime example why we needed a city, assistant city manager. Because if we had one established when we asked for one a year and a half ago, we wouldn't be in a position that we're in right now. So I think that it's imperative that we, we find a city manager that is willing to work with us in, in creating this position, so that we can get the right job description and then get the right candidate for our city. Thank you.
Okay. I guess if there's no more discussion on it, should we just take a straw vote to postpone this until such time as we have hired a city manager? And then it should go on the agenda immediately upon, upon that person getting their feet into the water, so to speak? Okay, all in favor? And it's unanimous. So we'll postpone that until such time as we have a new city manager. Next, we have a good topic here, Salvation Army 2021 program. Alderman Snoyka.
Yeah, so I had asked several months back, we had filled our $25,000 grant agreement with Salvation Army for COVID-19 relief for Rolling Meadows residents. And so we were getting, I believe, monthly reports, if I recall. And so when we had reached our allotted $25,000, I had asked for this to be put back onto a COW meeting to see if we wanted to continue and do another grant to the Salvation Army for additional funds. So that's why this is back on, on our agenda for this evening. I personally would like to see us put some more money towards the grant for assistance to Rolling Meadows residents. We have not yet established, I believe Chief Noecky can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have not set up any emergency-type funds for the incidents like we had at the condo fires. We were not quite in that position yet, and, you know, if we were to have the funds already set up with Salvation Army, they already have the process in place, which has been really a saving grace, I think, for, for city staff.
Alderman Snoyka.
We have not, in fact, set up any angel funds to deal with any types of emergencies, such as, as the condo fires had described. But that is, we are researching several options. And I guess what I would want to let the council know is that we still have every year budgeted about $5,000 for the temporary family assistance program, which matches the requirements of the grant to the Salvation Army. I did have some residents reach out to me asking why we were working with a private organization in order to distribute these funds, and I wanted to clarify that here in the committee of the whole. The reason that the Salvation Army was, was chosen as a distributor of our funds was because, number one, they had a presence already in the community. So we already had residents that had been working with them. And we also had the organization working, not just with the community, but also with our social services as well. So they were, they were the easiest and most efficient to get assistance to our residents. And, and as a result of that, they were essentially the ones that we continued with at this point. No other organizations have really approached us, or we haven't been notified of any other organizations. I know that those funds were all essentially spent down within about a, less than a quarter or so. So the need was definitely there. What I would propose as far as funding is anything that wasn't spent in the temporary family assistance program through the city, that $5,000 from 2020, then be allocated towards this 2021 program with the Salvation Army or 2022. And then going forward, if the city's program of $5,000 isn't spent, that that money continues to accumulate for, for the grant funds. So that way, we aren't necessarily constantly pulling any money from the general fund, or rather, from any other line items that aren't already established through the general fund.
Alderman Snoyka.
I, I agree with Alderman Snoyka, except I was going to add a little twist with our current situation with our city manager, being that the way that our program is set up, that the city manager is the one that reviews those applications and, applications and processes them. I think that it would be better suited that we take our $5,000 that we have allocated this year's budget and give that to the Salvation Army, so that there's no lag, because we're not sure how long it's going to take us to fulfill that position. And then that person may, you know, not be able to process those applications in a timely manner. And I would hate for residents to be waiting all because we have a vacant position.
Alderman O'Brien?
Sure, I just had a couple of things. As I heard from three residents who are in support of this, the questions they had is like, do we have to repurpose it because COVID support is going away from a federal and state perspective? And I don't know how the language is with Salvation Army. Is I'm, if we couch it as just a family assistance fund, I could see that. The other question they had also is along the lines of, and we actually heard it at the Economic Development Committee, too, is, and I'm guessing, is probably just a question before it comes back for first reading, is part of the Salvation Army process due diligence making sure people are seeking employment? Because we've heard from the small business owners at EDC, they cannot get employees to come back. Is that, I'm assuming the Salvation Army checklist is, and we're trying to help from an EDC perspective, get businesses up and running, get people in their businesses, and we're hearing from the small business owners on EDC, I can't have many people come in because I don't have staff to serve them. I'm getting yelled at because wait times are too long and things like that. I just had a conversation at the Friday Nights Rocks a couple of weeks ago about that. So that was the only feedback from the residents that reached out. They seem supportive of it. Do we have to modify it because it's not COVID-specific anymore? And can we just check from the Salvation Army perspective that they do ensure, like, regular or not social security income, unemployment income, that there is verification they are seeking employment?
Alderman Snoyka.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I want to clarify that this is specifically Temporary Family Assistance Fund. So whether or not employment is being sought after or not, I think is kind of a moot point for this specific program, because it's limited to only one month of rent, or only one month of utilities, or childcare, or any other supportive resources in order to be able to pursue items like employment. But if the, if the specific issue is making sure that housing is paramount, then, and also the fact that our program requires that any applicants for this program have already exhausted all other methods, then I wouldn't want to require yet another, another item for a temporary fund that isn't meant to have individuals working with the city long term. This is, the name of the program is Temporary Family Assistance. So I would, I would be opposed to including any type of employment requirement, since the, the requirements are already quite strict and already, already designed to only be like the last resort. If they're coming to the city, these individuals are in dire states, right?
I guess my question, I guess my, like, the last three agenda topics we've talked about is all about revenue, is all about money. So I'm game for it, but stormwater, I know Director Horn was saying it's not a 2022 budget item, but stormwater, the assistant city manager, and this, where are we going to get the money from? I'm not opposed to it, but I'm also like, we have to look at it from that perspective, too, is just as we're going through the beginning stages of the budget perspective, are we going to take, totally joking with Director Horn, are we going to take 100 grand from the pothole and the street program to fund these? Because we don't want to increase property tax levy more than we would have to to cover costs, since we had no increase last year, just an awareness perspective.
Alderman Snoyka.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. And also for an awareness perspective, we don't have Ms. Daley on here, who is the administrator of this particular program from the past 20 years, but when, and we also don't have our finance director here either. But if they were here, they would be able to tell you that over the past 15 years or so, that program has not been utilized. And so if we wanted to, we could essentially claw back from the last 15 years a significant amount of money that hasn't been spent down from the general fund to fund the $25,000 that's being asked for '22 and then some. So the fact that that hasn't been carried over is ultimately a resource that could be considered a loan from the residents, since it wasn't touched or tapped as a result of the program really not being administered. I had members of staff who didn't realize the program even existed until we brought it up last year. So as far as where is this money coming from, we've always had this money. So I, I definitely think that this is something that should be a priority, especially since we are still dealing with significant incidents of, of people on the verge of homelessness within the city of Rolling Meadows, and that needs to be a priority for us.
Alderman Snoyka.
Thank you. So I think in light that we don't have our, our finance director and the chair of this program here, I would like to have actually two straw polls, one in, in, hopefully in favor of One in, in, hopefully in favor of taking our 5,000 family assistance that is already in our budget and put that to the Salvation Army grant because I don't feel that we can adequately administer that program this year. And then the second one would be to postpone additional funds until we have both of those at a next meeting to see about additional funds so that we can have more information. But I would like to see that 5,000 go immediately because we already have it in our budget.
We'll, we'll hit the $5,000 first. Is there any discussion on the 5,000?
I fully support this and this might be for staff. Can we do that in a cow? I'm fully supportive, but can we take official action and move this $5,000 tomorrow? Do we have to wait for?
No, the official action would be given at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and there is nothing that says we can't wait for a reading if that's.
Right, right, right.
So, so all in favor of moving the 5,000? That's unanimous. That's the quickest unanimous vote we've had. And then next, the 25,000 or whatever amount for Salvation Army that we postpone that until the next cow and ask for Ms. DeLeon and Finance Director Gallagher to be in attendance for those questions.
And maybe Dr. Nieves because I believe she's the one administering it for, to Salvation Army.
Okay, and Dr. Nieves, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous as well. So we, if someone, Judy, could relay that to them, that'd be great. And I believe that is all of it. Here. Okay, and I guess we just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Alderman Snoyka, Alderman Reyes seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we're adjourned.